Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Just one minor change. My first item for discussion at 10:50, it's listed on the agenda as state budget revision number three to Fund OO2. It's actually state budget revision number two to Fund OO2. That's my mistake. Just like to have that correct for the record.
All right. We have a motion on the floor for the agenda. Did I get a second?
Second.
The only thing we do is Renee Piper's not going to be here for an interview for the Board of Commissioners vacancies. She sent an email saying she couldn't make it. So this revised the agenda, remove her.
As corrected. I wrote myself as corrected.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Purchase order, any questions on the purchase order? There is no internal budget revisions, changes status. We have a letter of resignation received from the Court Security for Philip Gardner, effective June 19th, 2020. Letter of resignation received from Central Dispatch for Sandra Small, effective June 15th, 2020. Letter of retirement received from Central Dispatch for Mary Cackley, effective December 31st, 2020. I'd just like to say that Mary Cackley's been with the county for forty plus years and has done a wonderful job.
Started a company.
Right, exactly. And actually worked at the Sheriff's Department, you know, in Central Dispatch. But a lot of times under Mary Cackley's decisions and some of her stuff's been challenged, but at the same time, she's always been well documented and have all the documents in mind and to defend her case in the county council, so.
What do you want us to talk about?
We just got the letter, so.
Well, is there going to be a period of time where she can go over the operation?
I have worked with Mary. This week we've revised and updated the job description. The recruitment notice is complete, so I think you probably received an email earlier this week where we are recruiting for 911 dispatchers. I spoke with Mary to make sure that she was going to be okay with training, at least one more, one more training class, so we're recruiting for that now upon the acceptance of Sandra Small's resignation, who's the administrative assistant two for Central, and Mary's letter of retirement. We have those two recruitment notices that will go out tomorrow.
So with that, with those two, there's eight positions.
Actually, we have.
Six.
Correct. So, yes, so our intent is to, if we bring someone on board from the outside, that they will have time to work shoulder to shoulder with Mrs. Cackley to make sure, it's similar to what we did with fiduciary.
Yeah, what an amazing accomplishment. I mean, really, I mean, it's a, that is a, that is a high-stress job in the beginning, and for somebody to do twenty years and retire from it is amazing, but to be here as long as she has, wow.
They've done it very well.
Yeah.
Like I said, have been challenged, but the council did well. They've done a good job.
Well, not only just here for Berkeley County, they were trying to make sure funding is correct on the state government lobbying and all this kind of stuff, make sure that we're not one of them. A lot of people are finding the neighborhood, but to go in on the state government, it's most exciting.
I guess one of the things too that she's told me before is when the address changes and stuff, she pretty much had to have a bodyguard. It was Phil Mark, was very cautious and very protective of Mary.
Been on the social side, she knows the softball. I wrote ancient history.
Through softball with her. Pretty much, she knew what she was doing.
I haven't heard that one too.
All right, Nina, we have a set of approval minutes. All the council was present, Mr. Davis wasn't present, but Mr. Wang was. Any changes or corrections on those minutes? County council calendars. The cycle will be off on election day, which will be Tuesday the ninth. The fact will be in chambers on the eleventh, so the county will be closed for Tuesday the ninth, for the Board of Commissions. We got Vice President Delia on WEPM tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
There was a little misunderstanding. Somebody had me, somebody had me put on two weeks in a row, and when I called up, they were like, oh, you're not on the radio. That was last week. I was on there, had it on my calendar.
Did the bad Tracy do that?
I wouldn't throw anybody under the bus or anything.
All right.
Comes again, backing up.
Monday, the eighth, 2:30 PM, LEPC, 5:00 PM, Water District, 6:00 PM, Airport Authority, 6:00 PM, Farmland Protection. No meetings on Tuesday election day. Wednesday at 9:30 AM, we have the Bell Authority, 6:00 PM, Roundhouse Authority, Thursday, 6:30 PM, Fire Board. Any changes or corrections on Board of Commissions?
Who is, is any council member on WEPM tomorrow?
I am tomorrow, but I was, I had it on my calendar for last week and this week.
Then you probably showed up for it.
Well, you know, I was, I was, I was stressing because I had tried to call and tried to call, and I spent about half hour, forty-five minutes with the whole thing.
You looked like you stressed.
Finally, they called me back and they said, you're not even on the radio. I was like, wow.
Okay. All right. We have several bond, we have bond reductions. We have a bond reduction for United Bank Brookfield subdivision, zero six five dash zero five, Engineering Department hasn't made that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for panhandle builders and excavating Stonebrook Village, Phase Two, Section Six, lots two fifty-five to two seventy-seven towns. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a bond release for panhandle builders and excavating Stonebrook Village, Phase Two, Section Three, lots two oh eight to two thirty-three towns. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Bond release for panhandle builders and excavating Stonebrook Village, Phase Two, Section Five, lots two fifty-five to two seventy-seven towns. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Final plat, bond reduction of Vanberry Holdings LLC, Kinsley Properties, The Lakes of Martinburg, Phase One, Section Four, lots sixty through eighty-seven. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Any changes, questions?
I'm assuming that the two bond releases, everything has been taken care of of the property that would be common properties.
Because of being done in phases.
Okay.
All right, need a motion to approve, send in the.
Tell them.
Questions been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries, moving on. That's right, that's right. Brian had surgery. Yes. Board's meeting report, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. I didn't have the four meetings this week.
You gonna give all your time to Ms. Moss?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Moss?
She'll take it anyway. Okay. Well, first of all, I didn't have four meetings per se, but the American Corps of Individuals started Friday at the Townhouse. Her name's Claire Tyson. She's going to do an inventory of the artifacts and then do a virtual inventory of list of things on the website so people can see all the things that we do have there. She's also putting her all call out for oral histories that she's going to record later on June and early July that she wants to put in as a, like a flash drive that can be used as, on the, we have a TV screen and stuff down there that we can probably put these oral histories on. So this individual is starting on the ground running. She's very articulate. She, when we did the interview, she handed me her resume from Shepherd, and I asked what her point, great point average was. She said three out of five, so I said, I'm not going to waste my time looking at one shot. So, but she's very articulate and she's graduated and she's enthusiastic about the project. Degree is in history and she's taking a year off before she goes to her master's degree and she's looking to study in Scotland, possibly at the end of the year. So it takes a while to get the paperwork in line for that, that's why she was taking a year off. So it's nice to have someone that's enthusiastic as an educator, you love the kid that's enthusiastic. Number two, we had stress, structural integrity that was questioned by Department of Highways because the court was down in 10,000. I've met with Josh Bowers of Craig J. Rutterburg, and they, I've got all the paperwork off to them. He used to have me in time on my Friday, next to me last night. Going further with the FPO this week, even though I had no meetings, it's just like all kinds of things coming in. There's going to be a draft, virtual public meeting on eighty-one seventy transportation systems, then the second one has to do with freight on eighty-one, and the third one, I think, is the most interesting. It has to do with West Virginia rail service that they want our inputs and things on. So I will be getting these contacts to everybody, so if anybody wants to go into those sites, but I personally think that the one on the rail plan is significant for Berkeley County. So I won't get copies of all this material because I'm channeling the FPO, I get the stuff, I just got it this week.
The biggest thing with the rail in Berkeley County is Western.
Right, with the upcoming and then with Mark Train, you know, with Mark Train.
And Mark Train.
And Winchester Western is really, really developing some stuff with the economic development that I'm seeing some things come through.
Yeah, Amet Trax, the new company.
Amet Trax.
They are, they are an aggressive rail company that has a vision for, for expansion of rails and industry around rails, so.
What is it, one rail? How many train cars? I think it's four.
Right, and, and I, and I forget the statistics too, but there's how many, you know, it's how many tractor trailer loads of, of product that you can move and how much per mile to move it, and it's amazing when you talk about those numbers, but it's all about, it's all about having a place to load and having the access and all of that, and, and, you know, we, we have the hopes that those things will increase availability in the community, and when you look at what they do down in inland port, down before you get to front row, you know, it's amazing how much products they move in and out of there, but, you know, you still have to truck to there, so to have something this much, this much closer would be amazing.
Yep, I was, I figured it was neat. On the whole car, or whole train, eight miles per gallon. Pulling, pulling forty cars.
Yeah, no, it's amazing, it's amazing.
A little bit better than my truck.
You know, but, but the cost of transferring and all of that involved, that all adds to it, and I remember when we were getting gas that was nearing four dollars a gallon, it was a push for, that's when eighty-four lumber bought their new place, their new property down there, that's right on the rail, and the reason they did is because they had a, they had a study done to see how much they could actually save just by offloading rail on lumber as opposed to trucking.
They actually have an individual here that's not a distributor or whatever, or Amet Trax.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that tells you they're serious.
There's a, there's a local team.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So Mr. Light's still part of that group transition?
That's not one of the names that I, I'm familiar with, with everything we've been meeting on.
Mr. Delia?
I did not have any board meetings. I did have a committee meeting, an executive committee meeting on the development, I'll be best. That was worse, that was worse than that one because it was the first time that we've had a wrap-up, a year wrap-up executive meeting that just went over everything that happened in the last year, how the board is doing, and that board has seen a lot of change in the last couple of years, and, and thoughts for the future and changes, and I, I'd just like to mention that that was, that was a really good meeting to have the chair call a meeting for that, it just, what, what a good management, what a good management move to be able to have a wrap-up meeting, not only to understand where your positives were, but where your weaknesses were, so that when you go into the next year, you can have a, have a goal target to be able to chase things.
It's great. He did have planning permission, but I think he's a pretty good day. All right, I got Ambiance Authority, Ambiance Authority as a, as a organization's doing well. The thing that I've spoken to you about, Mr. Davis, I probably would like to start getting updates from Ryan, from the organization's side about once to a quarter, maybe I should say, yeah, or one, twice a year, one or the other. Because in, in the future, they will be in task with a lot of calls. As you know, a lot of them right now currently, those rates have picked up again, but, and then the other thing that's happened is they're being called on these calls, but they're not transported because people don't want to go to hospital, they want them to treat them at their house. And right now, there's, there's no way of getting funds replenished for that, so that was a little bit of a conversation piece, but they're definitely going to be in the near future adding to some personnel or additional career students. Just to do, not just to keep up with the calls, the call volume, and we're going to approach and bust probably ten thousand calls this year, but it looks like it's going to not be there because of COVID-19, if that's any reason, we've been pushing that threshold for quite a while, and I'll still emphasize that not only the office staff, but the field's crews and the supervisors and everyone in that Ambiance Authority is doing wonderful work, but there's many times that City of Martinburg, all their Then the second one has to do with freight on eighty-one. And the third one, I think, is the most interesting, it has to do with West Virginia rail service that they want our inputs and things on. So, I will be getting these contacts to everybody so if anybody wants to go into those sites, but I personally think that the one on the rail plan is significant for Burke County. So, I will get copies of all this material because I'm channeling the FPO, I get this stuff, I just got it this week.
The biggest thing with the rail and Burke County, Winchester Western.
Right, with the upcoming and then with Mark Train, yeah, with Mark Train.
And Mark Train.
And Winchester Western is really, really developing some stuff with the economic development that I'm seeing some things come through.
Yeah, Ametrax, the new company.
Ametrax.
They are, they're an aggressive rail company that has a vision for, for expansion of rails and industry around rails, so.
What is it, one rail? How many train cars? Looking out of fuel or something.
Right, and, and I, and I forget the statistics too, but there's how many, you know, it's how many tractor trailer loads of, of
Right.
product that you can move and how much per mile to move it and it's amazing when you, when you talk about those numbers. But it's all about, it's all about having a place to load and having the access and all of that and, and, you know, we, we have the hopes that those things will increase availability in the community. I mean, you look at what they do down in inland port, down before you get to Front Row, you know, it's amazing how much products they move in and out of there, but, you know, you still have to truck to there. So, to have something this much, this much closer would be amazing.
Yep, I was, I figured it was neat. On the whole car, or whole train? Eight miles per gallon. Pulling, pulling forty cars.
Yeah, no, it's amazing, it's amazing.
A little bit better than my truck.
You know, but, but the cost of transferring and all of that involved, that all adds to it. And I, I remember when we were getting gas that was nearing four dollars a gallon, it was a push for, that's when eighty-four lumber bought their new place, their new property down there. Right on the rail and the reason they did is because they had a, they had a study done to see how much they could actually save just by offloading rail on lumber as opposed to trucking.
They actually have an individual here that's kind of a straighter or whatever, who are Ametrax.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that tells you they're serious.
There's a, there's a local team.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, Mr. Light's still part of that group?
That's not one of the names that I, I'm familiar with, with everything we've been meeting on.
Mr. Elliott?
I did not have any board meetings, I did have a committee meeting, an executive committee meeting on the development authority that, that was worse, that was worse than that one because it was the first time that we've had a wrap-up, a year wrap-up executive meeting that just went over everything that happened in the last year, how the board is doing. And that board has seen a lot of change in the last couple of years and, and thoughts for the future and changes. And I, I'd just like to mention that that was, that was a really good meeting to have the chair call a meeting for that. It just, what, what a good management, what a good management move to be able to have a wrap-up meeting, not only to understand where your positives were, but where your weaknesses were so that when you go into the next year, you can have a, have a goal target to be able to chase things.
It's great. He did have planning permission, but activities are probably with eight. All right, Ambulance Authority, Ambulance Authority as a, as a organization is doing well. The thing that I've spoken to you about, Mr. Davis, I probably would like to start getting update from Ryan, from the organization side about once to a quarter, plenty, I should say. Yeah, or one, twice a year, one or the other. But then, in the future, they are being tasked with a lot of calls. As you know, a lot of them right now currently, though, those rates have picked up again. But, and then the other thing that's happened is they're being called on these calls, but they're not transported because people don't want to go to the hospital. They want them to treat them at their house. And right now, there's, there's no way of getting funds replenished for that. So, that was a little bit of a conversation piece, but they're definitely gonna be in the near future adding to some personnel or additional career students. To do, not just to keep up with the calls, the call volume. And we're gonna approach and bust probably ten thousand calls this year, but it looks like it's gonna not be there because of the COVID nineteen, if that's any reason. We've been pushing that threshold for quite a while. And I'll still emphasize that not only the office staff, but the fields crews and the supervisors and everyone in that Ambulance Authority is doing wonderful work. But there's many times that city of Martinburg, all their ambulances are out, ours is out. And it's, even though we're trying to update our equipment to get us out faster, to run the mobile datas and stuff and the, and the ambulances, which reduce the turnaround time, probably about twenty minutes at the hospital. And the other thing that you don't realize is when there's a backup at the ER in the hospital, that ambulance has to sit there until, until they can get them in the, in the hospital. So, that's their, their holding area sometimes, but anyway, other than that, going well. Board and commission vacancies, any activity there?
We've got, it looks like we have Tammy Alexander wanting to get an interview, I guess, for the Development Authority. We could schedule that. I'd also like to make sure that we send Daryl Briarley a thank you letter. Apparently, he's not, not going to be re-upped or doesn't want to be at this time. Daryl's done a good job on the Development Authority and, or the Airport Authority and represents a certain group, so we'll be, we'll be looking for someone to fill his spot.
All right, any other? Building commission. All right. What about the, to get a confirmation?
I, I did and he decided that he would not, would not be moving forward with that. Didn't I, did I call you with that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that a priority. Okay. All right. Mr. Bentley, you wanna do your resolution, sir? Okay, entertain a motion on the amended resolution for funding on five twenty South Raleigh Street. Questions been made?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Davis, you have state budget revision number two, fund zero zero two.
Okay. You will find in your packet, the first item for your consideration is, as Council President Copenhever indicated, is state budget revision number two to the coal severance fund, fund zero two. This council, in February, March of two thousand nineteen, projected coal severance tax to come in at around a hundred and fifty thousand. The coal severance tax actually overperformed projections to the tune of a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So, that today, as of the end of April, we had collected two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So, the first half of the budget request for revision of the budget is to add a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars to revenue collected to reflect the two seventy four sixty. The current bank balance is two hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and six cents, again, at the end of April. The second half is the expenditure portion. I'm requesting that you increase line nine eighty-eight, other buildings, which is our capital building account, by a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, so that the revised amount in that account would be four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance in that account is a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. If we add the one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars to that, that will give us a balance of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. In later this morning, as part of our discussion regarding bid awards as well as encumbrances, I will be recommending that we fund the replacement of the roof at five ten South Raleigh Street, which is the Sheriff's Department, in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and five, five hundred, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And also, the reconditioning of the back parking lot to the tune of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Both will be paid out of coal severance capital account, so that's the reason for the transfer.
Mr. Davis, you made a couple of statements. Popped my attention, you said that the coal severance is over before. Actually, in reality, when we set our budget, we, we don't overshoot our projected revenue from the coal severance because it's very.
Very, very conservative.
And why is it that we use it in capital outlay and not payroll?
Well, we, we don't, same thing with video lottery and gaming income. We try not to tie anything, any recurring expenses to coal severance or anything like that that's kind of unpredictable and is very cyclical.
So, recently, we, we've upgraded our boilers, we've upgraded our, our, our cooling system in here. We're not senior services building, but, you know, some of those things, they have to be prolonged because of the flexibility of revenue we can prolong it, but we can't, right?
Right, and we also out coal severance this year under a cooperative agreement with EPTA. We added the transfer station in the parking lot of five ten, five twenty South Raleigh Street. If you remember, we did the site work and had the, had the board, EPTA came in and put, actually put the structure up. So, we've been able to take care of a lot of, a lot of our one-time capital needs out of coal severance because we have not tied any recurring expenses to that.
All right, need a motion to approve state budget revision number two, fund zero zero two.
Second.
Questions been made, seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
You want to hear Janet while she's here?
Yeah, Janet, come on forward, we'll, we'll have Mr. Davis take a seat, we'll take you. We have Janet Holthausen, fiduciary estate accounts month of June. And while we're doing that, I'm gonna go ahead and make a statement that Maria Copenhever is a relative of mine, but way back before West Virginia was a state, we don't know where we separated. So, one of the attorneys can, we always said the other side, our side, and we're tied together somewhere, but it's over a hundred years ago. So, I'm okay sitting here if you guys are. I just wanted to make sure. I'm still searching out, but I gotta go to state of Virginia to find. I wa, I was not part of the, the state, sir. All right, Janet, thank you.
I'm here to present the state, state accounts that are scheduled to be approved on, well, this morning, in fact, and we only have eighteen. We don't have very many this one.
I know.
Yeah, well, because of the, the virus.
Right.
So, yeah. I'll go ahead and read them off to you now. Tabitha Jane Albright, Geraldine Elizabeth Bartles, Helen Pearl Bivens, also known as Helen Bivens, Agnes and Copen, Copenhever, also known as Agnes Marie Reed Copenhever, David Lawson Dixon, Nuwan Edwin Henry, James Benson Johnson, H Kathleen Kaiscom, Douglas Edward Kelly, Louisa Wilkinson King, Angela Mary Ann Serena Payne, also known as Angela Mary Ann Payne, Kenneth Eugene Engley, James Stuart Roberts, Julie Lynette Smith, Donald Edward Trundle, Iris Elaine Wickham, Dela Mae Gancy, and Ronald Stephen Zombro.
Thank you, Janet. Need a motion to approve the month of June estate accounts. Second. Motion for second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
And that's all we have, no estate accounts, no anything to schedule any, any hearings for.
Thank you.
You bring good news to them.
Yeah, I do, wow. Very rare.
That's been good news. Y'all doing a wonderful job, Janet.
We try, thank you. We've been busy.
You're doing more than trying.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that, we do.
All right.
Take care.
Well, one of the estate accounts, I had the privilege, we actually, Mr. Roberts' resolution a couple of years ago.
Right.
And I was asked to read that resolution.
Wonderful man, I understand. All right, Mr. Davis, let's go ahead and get you back up, state budget revision number eleven, fund zero zero one.
We have received notification from the state auditor's office that the last day to submit state budget revisions to them would be June the fifteenth. So, as we typically do during the month of June, for the first couple of weeks anyway, we will do a state budget revision eleven today. I also intend to bring a smaller state budget revision number twelve to the council tomorrow, or next Thursday. Tracy and I have also sat down and we've gone through all the accounts earlier this week. We'll be proposing a number of internal budget revisions to make sure that we correct all the, all the deficit balances. I met with Myra, our finance director, yesterday. We are preparing next year's budget in this, in the system so that come July first, we're, we're ready to, to roll. In order to close out this fiscal year's budget and open next fiscal year's budget, we will not have a purchase order log or internal budget revisions the last Thursday of the month, which is what we typically do. So, we're working with all the departments now, all the fourth order allocations have been done. We have thirty encumbrances, which we'll be discussing later today. I have twenty-one that I will be presenting today and another nine to be presented next week. So, we're, we're actually buttoning up fiscal year nineteen twenty so that we can open the books for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So, this compared to some of the state budget revision number eleven as compared to some of the other state budget revisions is relatively small. Again, we're, we're mostly just cleaning up accounts. Since our last state budget revision, we've received sixteen checks and ACHs totaling a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Most of the revenue that we've received was just routine reimbursements of grants, payment for IT services. However, one thing of note is an ACH from the state of West Virginia that, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars that we received, which will be distributed to voters' registration. That thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars is reimbursement from the Secretary of State's office for extraordinary expenses that we incurred moving the primary election, mailing, you know, printing out the absentee ballots, getting the notices out to register voters, so on and so forth. We received fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for printing and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars for postage, which is being put back into the account because both of those line items currently have, has a deficit balance. Of the remaining a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, I'm recommending that eighty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars be placed in the county council's account, seventy thousand dollars in salaries, five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars in FICA and seven thousand dollars is in repayment. Our salary line item is running a little, a little over what it, where it needs to be. If the council recalls, you did authorize adding a second attorney to the council's office effective December first. And so, I've been monitoring your salary accounts to make sure that we have adequate money for that. The eighty-two thousand, three fifty-five will be more than adequate to, to cover and certainly there will be a surplus left over. Thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars again will be put into voters' registration, department four thirteen. We will also, I'm also recommending that we place sixty-five thousand dollars in information technology in our maintenance and repair equipment account. That reflects some changes that the council authorized several months ago to some internal, internal improvements that we made with software and some, some other things. Nine thousand dollars with, for engineering. We have a go-live date for our new engineering and planning software of the, the last week in June. They did want to do it the, the week of July fourth, or the, the week in which July fourth falls, so we're actually gonna go live the last week in June, so we did have some overtime. The overtime budget for four thirty-eight is actually only about nine hundred dollars. So, I, I just, again, I put the additional money in there knowing that probably over the next couple of weeks, we may have some overtime, but that, that money is more than enough. And then, we'll be reducing contingency by seventy-five thousand, one hundred, seventy-six dollars again to pay for the additional payroll and IT upgrades, which the council had agreed to.
That department is another one of those departments that Brian Ross is doing a wonderful job. Brian, if there's a situation, he, he takes it himself a lot of times and finds a solution to it and then, and then work together and get those things done. But I, I believe they're doing more inspections and more permitting than they were back in the boom in oh five with considerable less people.
Right.
So, and, and again, I think I've talked about it before recently, a lot of smiles in that office.
Right.
Which wasn't common to see at all now.
And, and as the council knows through your revenue projections, because the economy is, has been strong and continues to be strong, the, the permits department generates enough revenue through fees that permits and engineering is pretty much self-sufficient. Self-supporting. That's all I have, yes, sir.
All right, need a motion to approve state budget revision number eleven, fund zero zero one.
Second.
Second. Questions been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We'll take a short break, we'll reconvene.
What do you think about the, about looking at all the handicap ramps around the building at some point and upgrading them?
I think it should be the city's job. They're doing everybody else's, why don't they do that?
The city's not.
The city putting in all these ones, everyone else.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the government, government, that's state. All these ramps and lights and all that, that's done part of the state, the government.
Well, why, why should they not do that?
Because they're only doing, they're only doing the ramps on.
Are you saying that probably, probably not on the sidewalks?
No, I'm talking on sidewalks. They're only doing the, the state's only doing the ones that are on.
Right along.
Yes, the city streets.
That's why they're doing it throughout the state, yeah. Their environment, they're doing America.
Of course, they did. And there was one contract, there was one contract for non-lighting. Of course they did. And there was one contract, there was one contract for non-lighted intersections. And now there, then there was another contract for lighted intersections. And there was another contract for the new lights at all the intersections. So that's what they're doing right now. They're putting, because some of them, they can't finish the ramps until the lights, the new lights go up and then they have to tear those.
All right. All right, we're back in session. I do need to start off and say, Tracy, I do owe you an apology. I do have in my hands where Mr. Delia did sign up for May the 29th and June 5th, and it is his signature. So, you know, he was right, he was wrong.
Well, I didn't take care of the scheduling, so I don't, you know, I'm just assuming though that was taken care of.
All right. Is that why you're wearing pink today?
Yeah. I am feeling a little soft today with the, you know.
All right, Mr. Davis picking back up with you. All right, Mr. Nevers picking back up with you, uh, 2020-21 encumbrances. Thirty of them.
Actually, we have thirty-one today, and I'm bringing in nine more next week.
All for a dollar.
Correct.
Well, that's good, because that's the limit, isn't it, forty?
You have twenty-nine general fund encumbrances totaling one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and six cents, and two coal severance department encumbrances totaling two hundred and thirty-two dollars, three hundred and eighty-five, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Now, there continues to be some confusion with our department heads, not necessarily department heads as much as elected officials as for the need of encumbrances. Um, and as you know, they serve an important, or they're an important financial tool. It does two things. It makes sure that services and products that were ordered in this current fiscal year are paid for in this current fiscal year. Anything that we purchase now, particularly with the P card.
Well, it definitely helps balance the budget.
It does. It would not show up until July or August of next year, so by encumbering the money now, um, we make sure that the funding for the goods and services ordered this year and approved this year by the council is properly paid for out of the current fiscal year. The other thing that it does is, um, in about a month, um, we will be, council will be declaring the unencumbered fund balance for coal severance, which has to be done by July the 15th, and also the unencumbered fund balance for the general fund, which has to be done by July the 30th.
If we didn't do this, then next year, we would blow our budget by two hundred fifty dollars.
Correct.
Right from the start.
Correct. And as you know, your unencumbered fund balance is the cash balance in the, either the general fund or the coal severance account as of June 30th, less any encumbrances, less any outstanding checks. So, we have to, the council has to encumber the money for those reasons, so, um, and I've talked to some of the elected officials and tried to explain to them that it's not a matter of the council wanting to control their spending, but making sure that financially it's being reported the way it, the way it should, so, um, do you want me to go down through, through each one?
Yeah, you can just go quickly.
You have, um, in 2015, uh, April of 2015, this council passed, uh, an encumbrance policy, which states an encumbrance is a reservation of budgeted funds for obligations or contracts for goods, materials, and/or services which have been ordered through the appropriate procurement process and are expected to be received within a period not to exceed sixty calendar days. Um, I did go through and verify that all of the requests today, unlike in years past, um, meet the, uh, the guidelines set by the council in policy IC 11, and also has the adequate funding for the encumbrance if the council so chooses. Um, Department 404 has one encumbrance request submitted by the sheriff. Sheriff Keller's requesting that he be allowed to expend, um, four hundred and seven dollars and ninety-seven cents out of supplies and materials and nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents out of 409 supplies and materials to buy ten calculators at one hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. When the encumbrance was requested, um, the supplies and materials line item for 404 did not have any money, but as if the council recall last week, um, you did, um, approve an internal budget revision, uh, moving four hundred and eight dollars into that account. So again, there is adequate funding, um, for the purchase of ten new calculators at the, at a cost of one hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents for the tax office. The next, probably, the next one, two, three, four, five, six, um, encumbrances are routine encumbrances that, um, the council sees every year at this time that's directly related to our tax bills. Um, the first request is of Department 409, which is the tax processing department, uh, encumber seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars for software systems for the processing, printing, and mailing of tax statements. Current unencumbered fund balance, uh, in that account is forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Um, the next request is, again, to encumber thirteen hundred dollars for software systems, um, out of two thirty contracted services for tax archive and conversion charges. The next request is out of Department 409, uh, line three forty-one supplies and materials. Sheriff would like to encumber four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, uh, payment of Castro and Harris for a supply of six-inch by nine-inch envelopes for tax receipts. Current unencumbered fund balance in that account is eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, next request is assorted printer toner cartridges to be purchased from WB Mason. Uh, again, purchased out of supplies and materials at a cost of two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents. The next request is, um, Department 409, two twenty, advertising and publication. Um, we are in the process, or the tax office is in the process of advertising the delinquent land list in the Martinsburg Journal. That account, when the request was submitted, had an unencumbered fund balance of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents. You did approve an internal budget revision last week that provides an unencumbered fund balance today of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. The sheriff was requesting that he be allowed to encumber forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's based on, actually slightly, what we projected the cost of advertising will be maybe slightly more than that. Um, we have not gotten the cost from, um, the Martinsburg Journal. That's actually based on our June 2019 invoice, so we think it's within a couple hundred, hundred dollars.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
And just because it just popped in my head. Is, if, if that, if that, what's the, what's the advertisement cost? What was it, forty?
Forty-nine, three twenty-two.
Almost fifty thousand. If you have almost fifty thousand, and, and you have, you know, uh, two hundred, um, a list of two hundred that are on there, does, does state law allow you to add that, um, that percentage onto those individuals' tax bills so that the county can recoup the...
When, when you see it's in, one of our revenue line items. We have a revenue line item that, um, let me find it real quick here.
I've seen costs on those.
Penalty, it's, uh, account number zero, zero, one, three, oh, two, penalty interest and publication fees. That's that revenue coming back.
That's the return.
Correct. We, for example, this year, we had budgeted, we had projected four hundred thousand dollars. Um, actual year-to-date revenue as of the end of April was four hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents, so we do get that money back eventually.
So the ones that don't sell and go to the state to sell, um, isn't that the process? If they don't sell at the sheriff's auction, then the state ends up with them, and the state sells them? Does the state give us that money back that we had into it, or...
Uh, no, I can't answer that. I don't, I'd be honest with you, I don't know. Knowing the state the way I do, I would say no, but...
Think they'd keep that, would you?
We can, we can check.
Yeah.
But we do, if it goes through...
Maybe, and maybe it's one of those things that you just have to ask for.
Even if it goes through redemption, as you know, you know, property even goes through tax sales, there's a period of time that you can redeem, that the current owner can redeem the property, they still have to pay those penalty interest and publication fees. Um, the next request, again, Department 409, um, sheriff's requesting that he be allowed to purchase a variety of office equipment from WB Mason, one hundred and ninety thousand, fifty-seven dollars. Most of this will be done on the P card, um, so that's, and, and as I said, it probably won't show up until July or August, so that's why he's encumbering even some of these smaller amounts.
What amount again?
One hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents.
There was one, there was one of these that I had seen that had loads on it that I kind of questioned. Why would we be encumbering money for a purchase?
That was, um, and we'll get down to that, that's in the sheriff's, that's lower. Um, it's lumber for firearms and tactical shooting training, uh, five hundred and twenty dollars from Lowe's that they would be purchasing on a P card.
Right. Lowe's and Home, Lowe's and Home Depot. Uh, so they're gonna, they're going to order that before the end of the year?
Correct.
I got you.
Um, the next request is actually from your courthouse account, uh, account four twenty-four, but it's directly related, um, to services provided by the tax office. And again, it's something that we, we encumber every year. Um, I'm requesting that the council, uh, encumber forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents payable to software systems, which is the postage that they've projected needed for the 2020 tax bills. Current unencumbered fund balance in the courthouse, um, postage line item is forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um, the following requests are Department 700 Sheriff's Department. The first request is the sheriff's, sheriff is requesting that he be allowed to encumber three hundred and sixty-nine dollars payable to U-line for a rolling step ladder needed for the foul room. Uh, the next request is, uh, for twelve thousand, he's requesting that he be allowed to encumber twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars payable to MSAB Office EN. Um, the explanation is for analytical tools included with the MSAB Office for XRY. Um, current unencumbered fund balance and supplies and materials is fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Uh, next request is, uh, Department 700, line two sixteen, maintenance and repair equipment. Uh, encumber eight hundred and seventy-five dollars payable to Karen East Inc. to replace the batteries, charge or clean the lights, adjust, clean, lubricate, and calibrate the total station equipment. Next request is line, uh, seven hundred, three forty-one, supplies and materials in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars payable to Federal Signal to purchase fifteen tear spike systems. Next request is for twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars payable to Cellar Geospatial, uh, to purchase a Trimble TDC six hundred handheld unit with forensic capture software. Uh, next request is, again, out of investigative expenses, line two twenty-three, encumber eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents payable to Evident, which is miscellaneous supplies for the lab. Uh, the next three requests are all from the uniform line item, line seven hundred, three forty-one, uh, and it's all for uniform supplies. The first uniform supply request is BKT uniforms in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, requesting, um, encumbrance of seven thousand, six dollars and eighty-three, seven thousand, sixty dollars and eighty-three cents payable to Galls. And again, the final, uh, uniform supply request, encumber one thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents to BKT uniforms. The next request is Department seven hundred, three forty-one, supplies and materials, uh, seven thou, five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars payable to Amazon for the purchase of digital cameras. And if you'll recall, some of the things that he's asking to be encumbered in this year's budget are things that he had asked to be put in next year's budget that we, that the council did not fund, so he's, he's actually paying for some of that, um, out of the current year's budget, out of, uh, unencumbered fund balance. The next, um, three items, um, the sheriff intends to send Trent Heckman and Richard Steerman, Jr. to death and homicide investigation training, um, down in the Williamsburg area the end of this month. The first request is for lodging, the Holiday Inn Express, uh, encumber eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, the per diem for Deputy Heckman and Deputy Steerman during that time, uh, six hundred and ninety-six dollars in, uh, per diem, uh, under travel encumbrance. And then finally, the fees, uh, for the training payable to the Public Agency Training Council in the amount of one thousand, fifty dollars. The next several requests, next six requests are all out of supplies and materials of the sheriff's department's budget line three forty-one. The first request is payable to Amazon, uh, in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents for replacement of squad room, uh, broken chairs. Uh, the next request is line fi, is in the amount of five twenty, it's the one that Council Vice President, uh, Council Vice President Delia mentioned payable to Lowe's, uh, for lumber needed for air, firearms and tactical shooting training. The next, uh, encumbrance request is six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents payable to Amazon for tactical gloves needed for the CRT tactical team. Um, next encumbrance request is two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents payable to Mad City Outdoor Gear for tactical gear, uh, to include holsters, quick loop, and drop adapter. Next request is two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, uh, payable to Rock and Rescue for twenty-eight door wedges needed for the SRT and tactical team. Um, the next request is four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, uh, again, for technical gear, belts, ammo, and bang pouches payable to High Speed Gear, which is a sole source, and we do have the sole source letter. And then the final request out of the general fund is Department seven seventeen, which is the central garage. Um, we're requesting that the council, uh, allow us to encumber nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, payable to the West Virginia Public Safety Equipment. You have awarded that bid. Um, if you recall, we had an animal control vehicle that was totaled. Um, we have replaced the vehicle, we have the vehicle, uh, on site, it has not been outfitted yet, so, uh, West Virginia Public Safety Equipment will be outfitting that, but because of COVID-19, um, they have not been able to get to it as quickly as they would like, so we would like to encumber that nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance, uh, under, uh, seven seventeen, two twenty-six insurance and bonds is nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's all the general fund request.
All right. I need a motion to approve the encumbrances.
Actually, I haven't done coal severance, so that would be the twenty-nine general fund.
I'm sorry. All right, let's do the encumbrances for the general fund.
Second.
Motion to make secondhand special. If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion, carry. Coal severance.
Um, through, uh, state budget revision number two to fund number two, coal severance, which you authorized earlier this morning, um, we've moved additional monies, uh, we've, we've recognized the additional revenues that we've collected through coal severance, and we've put that into the coal severance capital account, account nine eighty-eight. Um, in the, soon after we have this discussion, I intend to make recommendations for the replacement of the roof, um, needed at five ten South Rowley Street, and also the refurbishment of the Dunn Building parking lot. Um, the, the recommended bid amounts for the roof will be two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance with the coal severance, um, budget, um, revision number two that you just approved is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, and also recommending that you allow us to encumber twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for the resurfacing... for the resurfacing. We're actually going to remove the center island of the parking lot in the rear for a concrete pad for the dumpsters, and then repave and restrike the whole parking lot in the amount of $25,835. Would like to pay that out of the capital count of coal severance for this current fiscal year.
We need an additional parking space?
We will get additional parking spaces. We'll lay that out and realign the whole thing. We're also going to have it fenced with two mechanical gates put in that are similar to what we have down at 802, which we, Tracy just finished the RFP for that last week. We just haven't gotten it on the street yet. The total of those two encumbrance requests is $232,385. Again, to come out of capital outlay, 988 coal severance.
Okay. I'm on a pause to ask for a motion on those until we go through the bid recommendation.
Okay.
And want to make sure that they award the bid.
Got it. Yes, sir.
All right. So let's move on to bid recommendation, construction.
Hello?
All right. So bid recommendation, RFP, construction loan. Yes. Clark, 520 South Raleigh Street, finance.
Some time ago, as you know, we've been working on moving the Facilities Department out of 520 South Raleigh Street to 750 Baltimore Street so that we could renovate the construction, renovate 520 South Raleigh Street for the expansion of the day report center. This is a project that we've been working on for about a year. The council did authorize me to put an RFP on the street for financing. So on Thursday, May 14, 2020, we did open bids for $3.8 million in construction loan and renovations. The construction renovation loan needed for the adaptive reuse of 520 South Raleigh Street. We received seven, I'm sorry, six bids. First United Bank, Summit Community Bank, United Bank, Bank of Charlestown, CNB Bank, Crews and Associates. The proposals were reviewed by committee composed of Council President Copenhaver, Mr. Bentley, and I. After a thorough analysis of all the bids, it's our consensus that we recommend to the building commission that a 20-year, 240-month lease revenue bond be issued through Crews and Associates. Committee feels that the financing approach, this financing approach will provide Berkeley County with the most advantageous interest rates and payment option. You can see that when they submitted the bid, the true interest cost for Crews and Associates through a bond was projected to be 2.796%. This is a very favorable market right now. Not only were they the lowest interest rate, not only was the proposal by Crew and Associates the lowest interest rate at the time that the bid was submitted, we did receive an update this past Monday, June 1st, saying that the true interest cost had actually decreased even more to 2.372%. And we expect that to continue. It'll take us about 60 days to go through the process. As you know, we'll have to be reviewed by Moody's, which we expect to happen in early July. Our financial situation, since we had our last Moody's review in 2015, has greatly improved. So we certainly don't expect a problem. The trending of the municipal bond market now is good, and it's expected that it will continue to trend in our favor.
Actually, is it not a true statement, the last two years when all of was done, there was zero findings for years?
That's correct.
One of the things that they looked at us about the last time was our rainy day fund not being at a, what they felt was a safe rate, I think 17%, and we're really close to that.
We're at about 15, 15 and a little bit.
So that's improved over the last time we used.
Yes, sir.
I will say that the finance packages were very competitive. And I also would like to say that this council has been very cautious about their financing of when they pick and choose to finance packages or refinance bonds over the last eight years. And I think pretty much every time we did it at that current time was an excellent rate.
Right.
So need to.
Well, how fiscally responsible this board has been. And I think this board has done a very good job in the last several years by leveraging what capital you have on, or we have on hand, and using the best practices to finance at such a low rate for the taxpayers to get the most bang for their buck. I think, yeah, I think it's made a huge difference.
Yep. It's allowed us to do additional projects to save us additional money.
Absolutely.
And continue to put trust in people that do an excellent job. Yeah. And entertain a motion to move forward the Crews and Associates for our bond on 520 South Raleigh Street.
Sure, move.
Motion to make second. Any discussion, then we'll have a quick discussion about that. One of the things we look at on the project is the bid. First is how much money we're borrowing. As you know, there's quite a good bit more money than we're asking to borrow than what the bid amount is. But we have architectural fees. We also have parking lot fees, the parking lot cost is going to be involved. We, for me, Mr. Davis, there's quite a few.
We, the, and the very last thing we're going to talk about is the recommendation for the award of the contract for the renovation of 520 South Raleigh Street. It came in slightly more than $500,000 under budget. We will reimburse ourselves for architectural fees that we've already paid out of pocket. You approved the revised resolution today.
We also done the project, we wanted to be very conservative.
Correct.
Because everything is going on.
What we intend to do is there are some lights that weren't included in the original bid that we want to upgrade to the LED lighting, which is reflective of what we've done with the Judicial Center and the Dunn Building parking lot. Also, the lower bid for the construction renovation will allow us to completely redo the parking lot. That parking lot has not had serious attention for a very, very long time. So my intent is to come back to the council later on in the construction, towards the end of the construction of 520, and request permission to solicit bids for the resurfacing of that entire parking lot.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Now we have a bid recommendation, RFP, roof replacement of 510 South Raleigh Street. And even on this bid recommendation back was 2012, the recommendation on this roof was not to replace it. That several people done a survey on the roof, evaluated the roof, and said it doesn't need to be replaced.
Right.
Some of the contractors that you said two weeks ago, when they came to look at the project, even gave us options to keep the same roof we had.
Right.
Because it's still in decent shape. But unfortunately, we have had, have had quite a few issues on leaks.
Right.
Over the year.
We renovated 510 South Raleigh Street, as Council President Copenhaver mentioned, in 2012 and 2014, and had the dedication in March of 2014. It's hard to believe it's been six years. During that entire process, we did, we gutted the building out, the center block walls, we did asbestos removal, and we did have an assessment done of the roof. And at that time, we were told that the rubber membrane was good and there was no need to replace it. And since that time, we've had, we've continued to have problems to the point where we now, or the point where the roof needs to be addressed in the long term. So we did, again, at the council's direction, we did put a bid onto the street for the replacement of the roof. During that process, about a three-week process, we had upwards of 15, 13, 14, 15 roofing companies that actually got up on the roof and inspected it. Early on, some of the companies came back and wanted to know if we would entertain alternatives to the replacement of the roof. And not knowing what the cost of the roof replacement would be, we said absolutely. So we issued an addendum and asked, and we allowed roofing companies to provide us with alternative bids. On Thursday, May 14, the bids for repair or replacement of the roof of the sheriff's department were opened and read in the public record. There were seven bids received prior to the closing date and time. And you do have an attachment which outlines all of the proposals that were received, not only replacement of the roof, but also the optional proposals that were received. The bids were reviewed by Jack Lang, your facilities director, Tracy McCormick, procurement coordinator, and me. After looking at the bids, looking at the budget, it was decided to recommend that the roof be replaced rather than repaired, coated, or otherwise covered with a product having a 30-year warranty. So we are recommending a 30-year roof, and it is a flat roof. After further review, the low bid submitted by Reliance Roofing and Waterproofing from Manassas, Virginia, was deemed to be non-responsive and was subsequently disqualified by the committee. The references submitted by Reliance Roofing were not recent. Most were from 2014, 2015. There were no current references, and only one reference could be confirmed by either telephone or email. This loan reference indicated satisfactory performance with some major issues with the company. The next low is bid for a .090 membrane roof. It is an EMPT, EP? What is it? EPDM roof with a 30-year warranty was Harrods Roofing of Martinsburg, West Virginia. They submitted a bid of $206,550. The proposal did meet all of the specifications outlined in the RFP. Additionally, representatives from Harrods Roofing spent considerable time on the roof with Jack inspecting the roof. They also flew an infrared equipment drone over the roof to identify any potential hotspots so that they are intimately familiar with roof, and they should know going into what the problem areas are. Tracy did check all the references, and all the references were verified and gave exemplary ratings to the overall performance of Harrods Roofing. Therefore, we'd like to recommend that the roof at 510 South Raleigh Street be replaced, not repaired or covered, using Harrods Roofing, that submitted the lowest responsible bid for a .090 membrane roof with 30-year warranty for $206,550. And as I've indicated several times this morning, if approved, the funding for this project would come from the fiscal year 1920 Coal Severance Fund, which I've requested be encumbered.
All right.
Mr. Davis, I noticed that some of them is $8.00 square foot, some of them are cheap, some $65 or $75 per hour. Do you have a concept of how much that, is that above the $206?
That would be above and beyond the $206,550 if they get into more. If they peel back that membrane, there's actually a membrane in three inches of cerulose insulation. Once, and Harrods did four samplings. So like I said, I think they know what they're getting themselves into. But if they peel it back and find out that there's more extensive damage than they expected, then it would be subject to some additional costs.
Basically, the roof decking is above and beyond.
Well, I just want to.
Right.
It is metal decking, it's not wood.
Right. And some of it, as Mr. Davis said earlier, some of it has a roof on the back section. And then some of it's done by the square foot, some of it's done by the panels.
I was just, because I saw three or four different allocations of the way it was handled.
All right. Entertain a motion to award the roof replacement of 510 South Raleigh Street to Harrods Roofing.
Come on.
Motion to make, do I have a second? Do you all want to do a second instead of motion?
I made the motion.
All right.
Then I'll do the second.
All right. I have a motion on four, and if any further discussion. If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. All right. Church Street?
If the council will recall, early this fiscal year, we, the council approved, and we completed about a $1.7 million upgrade and replacement to the Arctic Chill unit to the rear of the Dunn Building. That unit was oversized so that when we get to the point where renovations to the Crawford Building is necessary, not only will the boiler unit that's located in the Crawford unit that supplies heat to the Judicial Center be capable of providing heat to the Crawford Building, the Arctic Chill unit located in the rear of the Dunn Building will also be used for the air conditioning. Because of the cost of that unit, as well as the need, and we, it's probably been 10 years ago, we discussed the need to repave that back parking lot and put a fence up along Church Street. We determined, using our legal department's research, that the center island absolutely is our property. We have no obligations to maintain that. So our recommendation is that that whole island be removed and that the parking lot be repaved and restrike. And as I mentioned, concrete pad put in place for the dumpsters, which is all part of the RFP that we, the site work and the pavement and the concrete are included in the bid.
Is the concrete dumpster pad out far enough to where the truck front axle setting on the concrete as well? That's where always gets bad, because they shake them dumpsters out. If not, we want to make sure. Oh, yours is rear dump, okay.
So.
Yeah, you got the city of Martinsburg.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on, again, at the direction with consensus of the council, we did put an RFP on the street. On Thursday, March 21st, we opened the bids for repaving and restriping of the parking lot located at the rear of the Dunn Building along Church Street. We received four bids prior to the closing date and time. Again, a summary table of the bids is provided to you in your packet. The bids were reviewed by Jack Lang, Tracy McCormick, and myself. We determined that all the bids were in compliance with the RFP that was issued on April 28, 2020. Therefore, we would like to recommend that the repaving and restriping of the parking lot located to the rear of the Dunn Building adjacent to Church Street be awarded to Pittsnagle Paving, that submitted the lowest responsible bid of $25,835. Again, if approved, I'm requesting that the funding for that be encumbered in the fiscal year 1920 Coal Severance Fund.
All right. Entertain a motion to award the bid to the Church Street parking lot to Pittsnagle. Motion to make, second, any discussion on that?
The, is there a time limit on that, when that's going to take place?
And we have talked to both Harrods Roofing and Pittsnoggle. Harrods Roofing hopes to be on the roof of 510 South Raleigh Street by the end of June, right? right? And Pittsnagle said also that they hope to be in the back parking lot, they could be available to do the back parking lot by the end of June. My only concern with the back parking lot is we have to put the fencing out for bid. I'm hesitant to have the parking lot done, only to be tore up when we put, with, put the fence in. And I think, I forget what project it was, it might have been the rear parking lot at five ten, we actually planted the poles first, and then they came in and paved around the poles.
Or done the sleeves or something.
Well, and we, and we did that, we actually, we actually did that at the nine oh one. Yeah, we did up Central Dispatch, but then the problem is they came and put the fence in too, and then we had to take the fence down.
Well, they jumped ahead of us.
Yeah. But, but, and the reason I ask is I believe we had a low bidder on a job a couple of years ago that wasn't able to get in by the end of the year, and then we had to do something else the following year and, and redo it.
Well, we awarded the bid at the end of the year, and the repaving was delayed, but not due to the contractor, the delay was, was on our end. And if memory serves me right, it was eight oh two, but they did, and it's Pittsnagle, they did come in the following spring and did the work at the cost that they had proposed the, the summer before.
And just, if so, this record reflects, we've always talked about running, he just said, cooling for Crawford Building, over from their chiller to the Crawford Building, which would mean that we have to go through this parking lot.
Correct.
So that's all, so that everybody understands.
Are we going through the parking lot, or were we coming, I thought the intent was to come through this building.
No, I think the intent was to run an eight-inch line, actually two eight-inch lines from the chiller, cross the parking lot, and down Third Street.
Okay, so I thought.
That's correct.
Right. But if it's going to go through the parking lot, doesn't that even be done?
Well, I was thinking about it. If you really want to, you can at least sleeve, sleeve it to where we want to go.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense to do the parking lot and then tear it up to put, put a line in.
Problem is, you know, when are we going to do the Crawford Building? I mean, it's going to be years down the road, probably.
Do we have sleeves coming, or, I mean, is there access into the building right now so we don't have to, we don't have to go down the street? We could come through the building and then enter the street and cross and go that route.
So we have access, we have access already into the building for that expansion? More sexy. We already have access into the building from the chiller, into this building from the chiller for Crawford Building?
We have taps at the edge of the building with a, a pathway that we could do it, yes. There were three options. Tap, come through the building, go around the side of the building, stay on the building, or go underground. It's insulated, I mean, all of our, all of our chill water's insulated outside anyway, so there are opportunities.
But naturally, we best to stay in the building as far as we can, rather than go down the street.
Understood, understood. And if, if we do that and come through the building, it actually is almost underneath of us, it goes right straight, right out, right down next to the corner. So we could go through the building, but as Mr. Davis said, when are we going to do the Crawford?
Right, right.
And I think.
I think it makes sense to do what we're doing, but just.
Yes, sir.
It's just, I just wanted to say that we're thinking about it.
Yes, sir.
Glad you're thinking about it.
Didn't want anybody to say, well, you didn't pre-plan.
Ah, yeah, well, they'll send it in.
Got on record now.
Save the tape.
Okay. All favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, so I don't get, now let's go back and do coal severance, and entertain a recommendation on coal severance.
Next question, wait, second. In accordance of, on the replacement.
All right. I would motion on floor, got a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Fed recommendation, RFP, David Port Center for reuse of five twenty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess either that or abstaining, either one or the other, but I kind of, I'll recuse myself. That way I'm not in the, on the discussion.
And the reason that Mr. Delia is recusing himself is because he's not elected.
One of the bidders, yeah.
Hold up there. I thought we did.
I made the motion.
On the roof?
On the roof.
On the parking lot.
We're not doing that yet. You mean the Dunn Building?
No, we did do.
Yeah, we did.
We just did.
Yeah. I thought I said my statement during this discussion, but could be wrong. All right. Do you want us to make a do the end, just in case?
Who made the motion?
Ms. Moffitt.
Okay.
Are we good?
In April two thousand nineteen, we began the discussions on the, the adaptive reuse of five twenty South Raleigh Street. At that time, you had passed the original resolution that allowed us to get the reimbursement for any general fund monies that were expended, not only for five twenty South Raleigh Street, but also for the Crawford Building, because we have had, if you'll recall, we have had the design work done, at least most of the preliminary design work done for the Crawford So this is a continuation of the, the early discussions that were started over a year ago, at the direction of the council, working with Crabtree Roarball and Associates, the building committee, which is made up of council president, Copenhagen, Gary Wine, Jack Lang, Tracy McCormick, and Tim Zaya, and myself, have been meeting with Crabtree Roarball and Associates for the better part of a year, working on the design work for five twenty South Raleigh Street, which was presented to the council some time ago, for your approval, which you approved. Originally, we had hoped to get the RFP on the street in March, but due to the coronavirus pandemic, the decision was made to delay it, which we did. We ultimately decided to put the RFP onto the street, so that on Thursday, May twenty-first, bids for the renovations and construction needed for the adaptive reuse of five twenty South Raleigh Street to be used for the Burke County Day Report Center were read and opened, were opened and read into record. We did receive seven bids prior to the closing date and time, and again, I've provided you with a table of those bids. The building renovation committee reviewed and discussed the bids, and as part of that discussion, Joshua Bauer, who is the senior project manager with Crabtree Roarball and Associates, was present and participated, and, and Mr. Bauer has been intimately involved in the process from the very beginning and will be the, will be managing the construction and renovations of five twenty South Raleigh Street for, for us as part of their, their contract. As a result of the bid, of the seven bids, two were disqualified for not being in compliance with the request for proposals that was issued on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. After reviewing and discussing the remaining five bids, it was unanimously recommended, it's the unanimous recommendation of the committee that the bid for the renovations and construction needed for the adaptive reuse of five twenty South Raleigh Street be awarded to Wolf Creek Contracting Company, that submitted the lowest responsible lump sum base bid of two million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. In your packet, you'll also find correspondence from Joshua Bauer, who, as I mentioned, is the senior project manager with Crabtree Roarball and Associates, that further supports the recommendation. Mr. Bauer checked all the references provided by Wolf, and you can see that he stated that references without exception provided a positive review of Wolf Creek Contracting. Wolf Creek Contracting, although they are home-based, I believe, in Ohio, also has offices, has an office in Charleston, West Virginia, and they've completed a number of projects throughout the state. All the, all their credentials have been verified. It's important to note, if the council approves award of the contract to Wolf Contracting, the low bid, in the low bid of two thousand seven hundred and thirty, two million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars, it is five hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars below the original construction estimate of slightly more than three point two million that was provided by Crabtree Roarball four to six months ago. So the delay certainly worked in, I think, worked in our, in our favor.
Okay. I entertain a motion to award the construction job to Wolf Creek Contracting Company for five twenty South Raleigh. Motion been made, second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Have Mr. Delia come back in. At this time, I'm going to hand the gavel over to Mr. Delia to finish out the meeting. Tracy, your paperwork's here.
COVID nineteen, sir.
COVID nineteen. I guess we got Mr. Lilly up, huh?
Huh? The only thing that I have on behalf of Mr. Burns, he wanted to pass on to the council that last weekend, as part of the additional screening that they've done, and this is the second session that they had, that they've had, they tested six hundred ninety-six individuals, eleven tested positive as part of that round of testing. Also, they are currently working with Parks and Recreation to open the public pools next week. That's all.
Good. We really still don't have a total number, though, do we? I mean, they, they gave us a, a round eighteen hundred, and then we had around eight hundred and seventy that were tested on a, on a weekend, and now we have, what'd you say, six?
Sixty.
Six ninety-six.
So like under twenty-five hundred looks like the total tester.
Well, the, that, that was, we were at two hundred count, the two hundred count was when they said around eighteen hundred had been tested at that point. So whatever the hospitals have done also added into there, so, yeah. So, so what'd you say, around?
A little few more than twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, so it's probably, probably around three thousand. But it'd be nice to have those numbers. I mean, I, I can't believe that we're this far into this situation and discuss, and the severity of what it's done to the economy and not have numbers, you know? Come on up, Randy. Come on up, Randy. What, are you shy today? You trying to get everybody going free? You got something really good you want to give us, if you?
Brian, you got some good numbers for us, buddy.
Okay, all right. We're saving the best for last, apparently.
There you go.
I guess you're up here, Brian.
That's it. How's everybody doing today? Good. Well, continue to move in the right direction. As you know, as you look out, roads are getting busier and busier, you know, nine forty-five, eleven, all that stuff. But anyway, we're starting to see that transition back to what we would consider a normalized daily activity. Call volume has gone through the roof over the last few days, continuing to work to, with our partners on, on reducing our overdoses and things like that, and continuing to find ways to educate the public, and so we can continue moving forward. But no cruising quarantine, not a whole lot of interaction with COVID piece that we're aware of. We've, since COVID has kind of calmed down, we were able to do interviews. The other day, we interviewed ten folks to take on part-time employ, looks like we'll bring eight of those people onboard over the next few weeks and months. But other than that, it's been business as usual, I guess as usual could be. Any questions that you guys might have? Yes, ma'am.
I had a young man contact me about, is there any EMT possibly? The guy was an EMT a long time ago, and he's out, he's been out of work, so he was looking.
He could, he could reach out to our office out there, if you'd like me to give with you and get his information, or give him my information, and, but we started a course just prior to COVID that we're teaching. We had to stop, but we're teaching it, the college is overseeing it, so they kind of put a stop on us, but we've just recently been able to get that started back up, so. But we can definitely let them know what's going on at the school, what's going on in areas around us, and find out is someone that wants to take it at an accelerated pace, or do they want to go through a specific curriculum?
I will, I will get them here.
Okay.
Is workforce offering programs for that?
Is that, is that part of EPICs, Eastern Panhandle, what used to be RESA?
Right.
Yeah. They do, from time to time, offer the course, but we kind of, we do courses for both, both RESA and the college, so, because we have that instructor base with us. But right now, like I said, we've only got the one course that's going on in the county right now that I'm aware of.
And that's for, for EMTs?
For the EMT basic course, yes.
Okay. What about the paramedic?
Paramedic course will run probably about three months after that, depending on, what we'll do is we'll put it out for interest. If we can get enough interest to make it cost-effective, then of course, we'll run the course. But looking at our agency right now, we have a number of people that are completing the curriculum courses at the college and other places. We have a number of folks that the only thing they need to do is test, because they've completed their courses, but COVID shut down the testing centers. So there, there's a potential to kind of see that shift from the BLS to ALS fairly quickly for us, so much so that we could have multiple ALS providers on a unit for a while, which is always a good thing. But with, with what, you know, what we've just been through and not sure what's coming down the road, there could be some caution, you could have some, you know, everybody's being extended out, of course, but you could have some things being pushed and pushed and pushed. But what we do is we look at Lord Fairfax Community College, a new agency called ACE, as well as our local college, of course, and HCC, to see what's being offered. I think Shepherd predominantly has the nursing program, so, but they're out there, it's just how they're transitioning back to starting up again.
Does, does the, does it seem like the domestic component is calming down a little bit since everybody's going back to work? I think you had, didn't you have like three shootings in a week or something?
That's, yeah, I mean, the question was, was it domestic related, or was it just, you know, people being foolish? What was it?
Right, something, yeah.
But, yeah, of course, last week, I believe it was a week, there was like four during the course, it was a seven to ten-day period. But from the domestic assault piece, we're not seeing as much of that over these last couple of weeks.
Good.
But we are back into that routine where the folks that... Morale seems to be good. People are looking forward to some much-needed vacation time. You know, it's always the first of the year, and they're anxious to see what our Board of Director does as far as employees' compensations and things like that. They're anxious, and we keep that super secret in a vault back there, you know? Anyway. But I want to say that, yeah, they're doing really, really well, still working hard, still doing what we ask of them.
So hopefully you can get some new part-time employees to be able to give, give needs, leave that, that needs happen.
Yeah, it's, it's trying right now. As I said, we have one young man deployed, and then one young man get injured, he'll be out for a few months, broken wrist, required surgery. So as I told you, should, as that COVID pyramid shifted, some of our leadership team and staff, you'll see them out on an ambulance from time to time. So that's, that's what we do to keep the wheels running and take care of the folks of the county.
It's not a bad thing though, is it, to be able to get out there and, and get back to the, the reality of it a little bit to keep that?
I think it's all about perspective. I mean, it's been a few months since I've been on an ambulance. Would you want me, or would you want the guy running five, six calls every day?
I, I understand that, I understand it. But there, but there's also the knowledge that comes from, you know, it may, you may not react as quick as the guys that are carrying those, you know, lifting and doing all that as, as the younger guys, but the, the knowledge is, is something that sticks with you. I mean, I say the same thing about my guys. My guys don't want to see me out there doing the carpentry work, but they, they can really appreciate it when I'm there and doing something.
That is true. I say that jokingly. What we do is, everything that we do is very perishable. If you don't utilize it, you either miss the advancements, or you lose the level that you had. So, yeah, we know to get out there, it's like anything else in your business, or whatever. When, when the ball shows up, it's, the first thought is, okay, well, what did I do? Why are they here? And then when you just say, hey, what do you want me to do? I'm here to help out, and things kind of ease out a little bit more. But that's just, I think it's.
Yeah, I don't want to do, I, I don't want to be out there and do it all the time either. It's, it's.
I'm there when they need me, they know they can call, or at least now they feel comfortable, and they appreciate it. They do. They say, hey, we appreciate seeing you guys out there more often, because it, it kind of delineates that line of who's where, who does what. At the end of the day, we're all here to take care of people regardless.
Good. Anything else?
I'm going to mention something, I believe, related, that you're thinking so much, are with, adding this kind of service. They out there, I was in Aspen, there was a six. I remember my, my best friend, on their own funeral, and thinking about the ambulance service. And bleeding first was, first, or something. I remember going on rides with my best friend, George Snad, to pick up folks who'd been hurt, injured. And I'm sure we scared more people. We helped.
Well, I'm glad that's.
That's the kind of service that we provide to high schools, 16, 17 years ago. I've been picking up either somebody who had just, or somebody who was injured, and driving them to the local hospital, Charleston, 50 mile, you know, fire, snowy roads, CT couldn't get out of your way, and it was a dangerous situation.
Well, that is the origin.
Things have improved a little bit.
Yeah, that is the origin of our, of the legacy that we leave. I mean, you look at Fire with hundreds of years of history, but EMS, in reality, we're about 50 years old this year. EMS, paramedics started in 1970 in Los Angeles. They graduated the first mobile intensive care medics, is what they called it. And really, they took a rescue squad and then jumped in the back of a Hearst ambulance, if need be, or followed them. And I think they gave two drugs and used a cardiac monitor, I think that was it. So you go from that to statewide protocols that oversee medical directors, to some of the procedures and things we do today 50 years later, I can only imagine where it'd be five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. And I will tell you this, I'm very proud of it, is Berkeley County EMS is really dictating and writing, along with other partners, the things that we do here in our state. Our Training Officer in this facility has been instrumental in making changes in sepsis protocols, shock treatment, and we will continue to do that moving forward in the hopes of, hey, we're a destination employer, and we, we just make the state grow, so.
Yeah, I can see 50 years from now where the, the ambulance goes out and actually takes care of the patient right there, and, and, you know, they don't even have to go to the hospital.
I mean, we've learned so much with telemedicine, that what, what we saw with mobile paramedics, where we kind of go out and visit folks, once we find the funding mechanism for those things, we have plans to bring that here. But it's hard to make a $300,000 to half a million dollar investment with zero return on how we, you know, it, it's bad enough now where you'll do half a million dollars in service and recover 2.5, because that's what the insurance industry calls usual and customary payment. So that's a struggle. But if you look at a complete offshoot of what you do in a prevention standpoint, and say, well, here's a half a million dollar investment with zero return, that's kind of hard. So you, at least from my perspective, we spend time lobbying, talking to people to say, hey, let's figure out a way to make this a compensable and, you know, worthy type of, of service to our folks. So we'll continue to do that. And when they say, yes, here we go, then we'll shift gears to that too, and hopefully when my time is up and I leave it to my successor, they'll take it and go on down the road with it.
Well, I think it's, one thing's for, for sure is that, you know, people, people get a whole different feeling when they have one of your ambulances show up as opposed to one of Norvis's Hearsts show up, when they're, when they're, there's a problem.
Well, when you guys have some time, I can show you some pictures of those Hearst ambulances from South Berkeley and Hedgesville.
I can tell you right now, if I'm hurt, I don't want to see a Hearst on the scene.
And going back to what he had to say, I started teaching from 1969, and Sonny Burke, who was the geometry teacher and math teacher, he was the driver for the fire truck and also the ambulance that they had at Hedgesville. And then one of the senior boys, or there was about three or four boys that had volunteered, and they would be, the ambulance crew, and a number of times, people had gotten hurt at school. I was the one doing the medical services in the back of the ambulance, riding in, because these kids were just picking them up and throwing them in the vehicle. And I had people that had strokes and stuff, and I was working with them, just going in, going into the hospital.
Well, I'm glad we're over that, too.
Yeah, we, we had a conversation the other day, and we were talking about parents being involved, and I said, well, my dad's EMT book was about that thick when he started. Today, they're this thick in their multiple books. So it's, it's definitely changed in 50 years. And we'll continue to change for the better.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Are you ready to come up now, Randy?
Nobody else is in front of me, Randy.
The anticipation's killing.
So, so Ms. Malk, just to let you know, there is a EMT course through West Virginia Public Service Training currently open for enrollment. I think it's going to be held at Shepherdstown Fire Department. They have them in different places. I did see.
So who do I find have?
You can go into West Virginia Public Service Training, their website, and actually you can register right on the website.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's two going on, right? Or two open for enrollment. One's an online course, but I think the practicals and stuff are in Arden County, but there is one closer in Shepherdstown Fire Department, and they come up, period. We, you know, unlike the Health Department, the AMIS Authority, they're out there on the front lines, we're kind of like in the shadows of this, but we're supporting those agencies greatly. And, you know, we continue to obtain PPE for the hospital, the healthcare providers, the AMIS authorities, the health departments. All that stuff comes through our office, all those requests come through our office. So, you know, we're, we're supporting our nursing homes, hospice, our shelters, that's, that's another place, you know, we're supporting PPE. The jail, you know, because we don't want outbreaks in those areas. So we're, we're currently able to get a PPE for, for those entities, as well as they report, you know, and our MEs, funeral homes, all those, all those folks, we're supporting them with PPE. Attend conference calls two or three times daily, different calls. It's coming, I think it's coming to, the state is going to start narrowing down that available PPE that is, that is going to be available for us. It's, they're starting to get, starting to tighten up a little bit. So we're encouraging entities to look for other alternatives. PPE's coming available out there. Unfortunately, it's very expensive due to this pandemic, and we're still supporting them as much as we can. We, you know, we've also supported some local doctors, dentists, clinics as much as we could. And, and we still have some stuff coming in, which I'm going to get to the good side of things, as far as PPE. We have community partners that are donating PPE for us to distribute out to our emergency responders, healthcare, and our, and our community. You know, Procter &amp; Gamble has done, has done a lot. And they, they kind of lead, lead that initiative, you know, coming from our communities. They're making hand sanitizer on-site, and they give, they give it to us, donate it to us in 55-gallon barrels. We then transfer it into gallon jugs, and we're able to distribute that out. And this is not a state asset, we can distribute this out wherever we want, wherever we feel necessary, so we don't have to go by the state guidelines, you know, where they want this PPE to go. To, to date, they have donated 280 gallons of hand sanitizer that we have distributed out in our communities. Baby wipes, there was 240 cases of baby wipes, 23,000 surgical masks. They donated Tide Pods, Spick and Span shampoo, body wash, numerous things that we're able to get out to our nursing homes and our shelters and protect that, that population. And of course, some of these hygiene things have been hard to get early in, in the pandemic, but we've been able to help those, with, with those donations.
You mentioned Procter &amp; Gamble. What other agencies?
And we also, Echo Lab has donated some concentrated cleaner to us that we're able to mix and get out to the communities. It's, it's a surface sanitizer, so we can wipe countertops off, you know, in doctor's office, dentist's office, or wherever, in, in the shelters and things. So we're able to get that out. They also, Echo Lab also donated the gallon jug, so we have to mix this stuff up, and along with our hand sanitizer as well. So they've been donating gallon jugs to us to be able to put this in and get it out of barrels and get it mixed up and get it out. Argos donated Tyvek coveralls, that's some of PPE that was, has been, and still is somewhat difficult to obtain, but they have donated some coveralls. Allstate Insurance, specifically the Berkeley County agents, specifically Amber Ritchie, Gary Kelly, John Shepherd, and Greg Smith donated some N95 masks, purchased and donated those N95 masks. Of course, the County Council purchased a 7,000 N95 mask, and, and those were utilized out there in the medical and healthcare field as well. Domino's Pizza, and sometimes we don't think about that, but Domino's Pizza, specifically the one on Winchester Avenue and Wilson Street, and the one in Inwood. When we had the testing events out on Bulldog, and then we had another one recently at Musman High School for the COVID-19 testing, they donated pizzas for, you know, the, the volunteers that are there working these two events, as well as Chick-fil-A did as well. So sometimes those get unnoticed, but those are, you know, valuable assets from, from what we're doing these days. Department of Highway, that's another partner that, you know, with the traffic control, when we do these events, the one, the event that, the testing event that we had in Martinsburg on Bulldog, we had a 30-hour notice, hey, this is happening in your county. You know, so it, there was not a lot of planning, we didn't have a lot of time to plan things. You know, with some of these partners, with Berkeley County Schools, Department of Highways, Public Works of Martinsburg, and I know I'm going to forget some, we're able to just call them and say, hey, we got this going on, can we utilize your facility? Or do you have, can we get signage for, for traffic control or something like that? And real quickly, you know, everybody jumps in and participates, and we make it happen. The one at the school, at Musman High School, we had a little more planning, had a little more time to plan for that one, but needless to say, both of those events went very well. The cooperation between the agencies, between the Health Department and the schools and our agency, the city PD or Sheriff's Office, whoever was involved in that, those entities all came together and pulled this off, and everyone worked well together, you know, as well as our community members. We, we had community members making handsome masks and donating to us that we were getting out. The West Virginia National Guard, 167, they have been, you know, working with those folks. That, that has been a very good relationship. On these calls that we're on daily, we hear stories where other counties are struggling, there's a relationship between the Health Department and the Office of Emergency Management may not be so good, or the relationship between law enforcement and their office may not be so good. And we don't have that here in Berkeley County. You know, we, everyone works together. The relationship that we have with our local Health Department is impeccable. Those people out there, we work great together. It's a 24/7, anytime we need each other, we call each other, we get what we need and get things done. And it's not just the Health Department, it's like that with the hospital, the AMIS Authority, the Sheriff's Office. We have that relationship here in Berkeley County, and it, and it's, it's our agencies, not powers in particular, but all our agencies working together, and our community members. You know, just the people out in the community, we have a great community relationship, you know? When, when things get bad, we pull together and it, it works out. Martinsburg Fire Department and the AMIS Authority, I want to mention them as well in the aspect that there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, and Captain Jamie Weller and Chief Chad Weinbrenner have taken a leadership role in assisting our office, you know, when they, developing the protocols, communication with the, all the emergency services. Chad has set up a meeting once a week, we do a conference call, we talk to all emergency services, one time on the conference call, pushing out information. So they took a leadership role in that to assist us in our office. On our PPE, if you request, the state has a way, an electronic form that we have to do, we have to reach out to all the entities every, we do this every two weeks. Our administrative assistant, Katie, has taken a, has taken that on and does that herself. So she's getting about 75 agencies a week for every two meetings, compiling all this information, goes in on the state website, and there's, and dealing with this website, it's not easy, it's not just plugging in numbers here and this is what you want. There's many forms within. There's many forms within here that has to be filled out. Katie has taken that role on. We get her PPE in. She separates everything, makes a contact with everyone, has them come out and pick it up, sign for it. She's got a system going on out there. So I just kind of stand back and let her go at it. She's, she's taken a very strong instrumental role there. We recently, Hanes has the T-shirt company, Hanes, that makes Hanes underwear and shirts, has made masks and made them avail and pushing them out so we can push them out in our community. Berkeley County received 25,000 masks. We picked them up at the Health Department Director Gokenhauer and I picked them up there yesterday. So the Health Department has reached out to us to see if we could distribute them through our contacts. We just sent 2,500 to the jail. The jail, I think, just went through some testing two days ago, COVID testing, hasn't got the results back yet. I don't believe yet. Should have them today or tomorrow. But we were able to push 2,500 of those masks there. Another great partner, Shenandoah Community Health, they're, they're going to get 2,500 of these masks. A lot of their, they see a lot of the migrant population and a lot of at-risk population and minorities there through their facility. So we're going to hand, they're going to hand up, assist in handing out these masks to get them out in our community.
These are washable masks.
These are washable masks, yes, cotton masks. They're, they're quite comfortable actually compared to, to some of the others out there. Morgan, and, and we, we're working with other counties too. Morgan County was allotted 25,000 of these masks. Well, Morgan County says, well, we don't even have a population of, you know, 25,000. Dicky Myers, the emergency manager over there says, you know, I don't need that many. He said Berkeley County can use, give me 15,000 and Berkeley County can have the other 10,000. So the Health Department's kind of holding on to them. So we're, you know, we're working together on that. With our, our, our hand sanitizer that Procter and Gamble was making, we're, we were able to send some to Frederick County, Virginia, Washington County, Maryland, Jefferson County and Morgan County. To be able to share that with, with some of the, our partners that couldn't get that early. So, you know, the, the COVID-19 doesn't know boundaries, you know, so we're, we're working together, you know, outside of our jurisdiction as well.
Right. It's important. It's important to take care of the surrounding area because that's, is what affects us here. And, and, you know, we obviously will see the benefit to help our neighbors out, just, just like in a neighborhood, it's just no different. You have to reach out and help your neighbors.
Here recently, we were able to send 25, or we've got 25 gallon of hand sanitizer allocated to the National Guard here in Martinsburg, 167.
Is there any more testing scheduled?
At this point, there is not. However, I'm not, there's talks.
Okay.
There's nothing scheduled, but there is talks. Let's see. I think, you know, in all of this, kind of one of, one of the bright things that, you know, Director Gokenhauer, myself and, and our office in general, we're seeing. Because this was an unfortunate event, but I always try to find a little bit of good in anything. So we have made a lot of really good relationships and partnerships that we didn't have before. And these started in the LEPC, you know, so I like to say LEPC works. When I look at Procter and Gamble, that's where our contact came from there. And so the, the collaboration that our community and whole, everyone, you know, it's, it's, I want to say thank you to everyone that's involved in this. Because it's been the assistance from the community, the community partners, it's been great. It's been overwhelming. And today, I think, we're better than we were, in a better place than we were yesterday due to this, having those contacts.
I think it's always, it's always good to look and see how you can do better and analyze what you've done, looking back on it and see what you can improve. Moving, you know, forward and, and yeah, absolutely, the relationships are very, very, very important. And, and to have those relationships in a, in a, a time that is not the need is, is the key, you know, to, you know, I, when I was younger, I never saw the, I, I never, I never acknowledged that there was a networking importance that you had, that I just tried to work as hard as I could. And as, as I get older, I understand more and more that networking is a vital part of, of business and community and, and keeping everybody together. So.
Yes, it is. It does make a difference.
Does anybody else have anything for Randy?
Now, I want to thank you. Like, many years ago, the LEPC was the point to take off, appreciate it and all of them happened. But I think this gives us even a better grounding across the state because of all the other folks that have stepped in to help us out.
And through, through this, through these other contacts that we've made, especially with our, some of our sheltering facilities, there's been more interest in the LEPC. When someone comes in to get PPE, I'm pitching the Alert Berkeley and the LEPC, you know, encouraging people to get involved in that. You know, the Bethany House Rescue Mission, the Epic, which was the former Shenandoah Women's Shelter and the Manuel's House is another one. Good Samaritan Free Clinic, you know, all those are valuable to us. Those, those groups have shown interest in our LEPC and getting involved.
I think the thing too was the shelters, the Bethany House and those have stepped up and provided a favor scope. The last two years, they've changed the administration and they've got a favor scope for what's going on. They're struggling to provide funding, family oriented. Somebody's ladies have children, getting a place for them to be and everything else. And of course, the Mount Air Recovery Center is getting ready to do a groundbreaking here in Wilson. Same thing for recovery. So I think this community will really expand and pick up a lot of lost folks.
And that's another entity that we've been able to support with some PPE and some of.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have something else there, Alan?
Yes, sir. Let's get comfortable. We have two employees that early on in the process elected for voluntary employee layoff. We indicated to those employees that they would be allowed to come back upon decision of the council. With the, with the openings of buildings, we think it's appropriate to allow these employees to come back if they so choose. Are you in agreement with that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Also, I know Andy is going to present to you an order, opening the planning commission meeting. I had a discussion with council president Copenhagen last night. And he wanted me to make sure that this council is in agreement that all of our boards and commissions should attempt to open the meetings to the public now. Is that, is that okay with you if we send out a notice?
Absolutely. We had, we actually had that conversation on the development authority meeting, the executive committee meeting about doing it. But what we also did was with that is we allowed to continue with Zoom.
We, we will, and I think that's me. Follow. You know, if the council agrees with the order that Andy's presenting with you today, we'll follow the, the guidelines that are in that for all of our boards and commissions.
Afternoon.
Before you, is an order opening up planning commission meetings to the public, although I got an alert while we were sitting here. It, it limits the number of people to 25. I think the governor this morning announced that he's going to allow the expansion of gatherings up to 100. But at the same time, you still have the state code regulation that gives the number of square footage or a number of people per square footage. The order before you is consistent with the county council's order that limits 25 people in the room at any time. Since I'm not really sure exactly what specifics of the governor's plan that he announced today, I would, I would advise that we keep it at 25 for now. But as the vice president stated, this order also states, and the planning commission members know that they can join by Zoom if they wish to, if they don't feel comfortable still coming here, and that the public can also comment by Zoom.
You're talking about the emergency rule?
Yeah, there's two different things. There's the emergency rule and then, you know, historically his, the DHHR has been talking about their 25 limit in gathering has been really for outside occasions. But the next planning commission meeting, I believe already has five to six public hearings scheduled. So just with the amount of engineers and people that come in, 25 could fill up pretty quick. So I, I believe the court marshals are going to help us on Monday controlling the crowd a little bit, make sure there's no more than 25. But this would allow people to actually come back into the room. Pretty much all the planning commission meetings for the last two or three months have been, they have all been held by Zoom. The chairman of the planning commission has attended a few of those in person, but the rest of the planning commissioners have been attending by telephone or, or Zoom. So this just allows this to open it back up to the public, but probably for the next couple of months at least, give the opportunity to also appear or the public comment through Zoom. It's just another way for public to participate. The first couple of Zoom meetings that we did have, we did have some members of the public call in. We have not had any members of the public the last couple of, of meetings. So we would recommend that this order be adopted.
Sounds like we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? That all you have? Items from the public. Doesn't look like we have any items from the public. That leaves it up to Mr. Barnhart. We are a recess. Thank you.